Okay, we're back with Council President Nick Church and Nick, how you doing?
Good.
He accused me this morning of only inviting him on, so he gave me coffee for me.
It's the only time you drink coffee is when I'm here and I make it. Put two and two together every night.
Not really, true.
Especially on Mondays, on Monday.
It used to be donuts, but.
I don't eat donuts anymore. How you been doing?
Good, man, what about this weather?
Oh, finally.
Nice, hasn't it?
Finally, are you doing anything special for 4th of July?
I'm gonna be out of town.
Oh, you're going on vacation?
Yes.
Ooh, you're gonna be driving on the 4th?
No, he's leaving before that.
We're leaving before that, we're actually leaving this week, I'm gonna be going through the 7th.
7th of July.
And.
Good.
We're going down to take my stepson down to college and drop him off and then we're going to go to different places.
Good, enjoy yourself, you need it, you gotta get away. A lot of stuff going on with the city, Nick, I know that you have a council meeting tonight. By the way, Andy, could you, could you make a copy of the council agenda on my site? Okay, thank you. One of the big stories that has been popping up and talked about quite a bit on the show has been the compost site. You and I talked at great length last week on this after the work session, it doesn't look, people think that it's gonna be closed for good, it's not, it's temporary closure, at least for now.
Yes. It is a mess, it is an absolute mess and anybody who's been back there to take their stuff back there to drop it off is in awe. I can't understand why, but this is what happens when there's no enforcement, I've talked to enforcement before I ran for office and since I've been in office, but this is what happens when there's no enforcement, when, when there's no gates, there's no control, stuff gets out of control. And this is a prime example. My concern is that why it needs to be closed temporarily is to get a handle on it, we need to go through this stuff bucket by bucket and take out the plastic bags, the computers, the chairs and whatever else has been thrown back there, shingles, because I'm afraid that if EPA comes in, EPA will be the one that shuts it down.
For good.
For good, for good, so, you know, I just took a stance and said, we need to close it.
I've got a rumor that, I think Debbie told me this, that EPA might have been here.
Well, there's, there's some talk of some people who have seen, who have seen someone with state license plates, the red and white ones, and back there taking pictures. Actually, I talked to a gentleman who lives not too far from the compost site that said that he was back there one day walking his dog and seeing somebody taking pictures and he actually walked by him and said hi. And he was all over the compost site, so, I'm just hoping.
Didn't you tell me, Nick, last week after a little meeting on the phone that we had, that the city went in and actually specifically went in there to clean up the site? And that lasted like a few days and it was back to the same again?
Yeah, people were, they drive around, I went there like 5:30 last Monday night.
Thanks, Andy.
Last Monday night before the work session and I drove back there and I was just in awe, it was, you know, people driving around the cul-de-sac and all around the cul-de-sac, it is just filled up now.
Tell me if, what, who's going to be cleaning it up when it's closed?
The city.
Okay, like city workers?
We're responsible for it.
City workers.
And you know, it's not gonna be cheap, we didn't have to dump that, cause you're gonna have to take it to a landfill.
Take it to a landfill, so it's, it's just, it's just absolutely unbelievable, because here's another thing that, that's on our list that doesn't need to be there, that if we would have paid to have somebody stay there and control that, we wouldn't be in a shit.
Whose fault is this?
You know, I'm not looking to point any fingers at anybody, but you're talking four years or five years ago. And I mean, if you can't afford someone to control something, you know, or enforce something and you don't put gates up or some control.
Right.
What?
Tell the folks out there the plan that you guys have come up with regarding how to keep people out of there now.
Well, when we do do this, first of all, city manager and I met Friday morning at 9 o'clock at the entrance down here to the compost site. About 30 feet, 40 feet in, we're gonna, we're gonna have gates, we're gonna have gates that are gonna be made fabricated and be able to be locked up in the evening or whatever may be. Wanna go back to the way it used to be, wanna have somebody there onsite telling people where to go dump it, not just driving up and whatever, so if, if we get somebody, it'll be like it used to be. So I'll say, you know, take your truck and go in the back and dump it.
Right.
You know, back around the corner or whatever may be, maybe two people, because Mr. Colby, the two, Mr. Col, Mr. and Mr. Colby, two Colbys, I believe.
Nick and Tom, yeah.
And the understanding did a good job.
They did.
I know people are concerned that it's gonna be closed for quite a while, you know, and we're, we're at a peak time. We're at a peak time and do I really wanna do that? No, does it need to be done? Absolutely, it needs to be done. So my thinking is to, I told the city manager, I'd like to see someone out, when we get ready to start cleaning this thing, that we have the new person onsite, I want him there, you know, helping clean up the site and.
Monitoring.
Monitoring and telling them what needs to be done, okay? And my thing, my thought is maybe we only have to close it for two weeks.
That'd be good.
And if we do it for two weeks, kinda like start in the back and come forward and as people come in, they take their stuff to the back instead of in the front where the mess is right now. And back out, if we can do that, then I think if we maybe only close for two weeks and then just start moving our way towards the front.
Now, say if you have that gate here, Nick, say this is a gate, then you have the sides.
Well, there's a curb.
There's curbs, the curb's pretty high.
Good sized curbs.
Okay.
On both sides, but we've thought about that too, we've thought about some other type of fence.
Bar wire?
Constantino wire, razor wire, and it's really a shame because the people who are paying for this are the ones that have been taking care of it. It's, it's always the, the good people, the good people, they know that obey the rules and take it around back, it's the people who don't care, it's the people coming in from Pennsylvania. I talked to a gentleman the other night down at the Port Authority liaison meeting and he said that he drove in there and there was a roofer, roofer throwing the shingles off.
Wow.
Right now, it's a free for all, it is an absolute free for all right now.
The sad thing is, once it's closed, even if it's closed two weeks, three weeks, whatever, those people are gonna throw their stuff in other places in town. I mean, you know, that's.
I understand.
The couches, it'll be next to the Goodwill box, I mean, it's, it's really sad.
I understand, and that's why we've been pushing for legislation too on the boxes, we've had a gentleman come up from Goodwill. And we're looking at too, looking at that too, I mean, if I catch you, if I catch a person, if I drive by and I see you, Nick Church, see you putting your sofa down at one of those Goodwill boxes, or I see you or at one of those Planet Aid, that I'm gonna call the police immediately, cause you are dumping, that is dumping trash on someone else's property. And like the gentleman said the other day, I think it was on your show, I think it was Mr. Claypool who said that it's everywhere, it's just not Kanye, but it's everywhere that they're doing it, you can see it, such clothes and shoes only. They're dumping everything, TVs and, you know, if you want a sofa gone, all you have to do is call Goodwill, Goodwill has a truck, I believe, will come and get it.
They do, they do.
Okay.
No, I went by, you're old, you lived on West Jackson when you were a kid.
I lived on West Jackson.
I went by there one morning and I'm going, as much publicity as we have done between you, me and the papers, there were still couches and chairs out in the front yard, I couldn't believe it.
In the front yard?
Yeah.
Just let me know.
Unbelievable, no, they, they don't seem to get it.
No.
You know, I mean, that's what we're trying to fight.
Yeah, has it gotten better? Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, it has gotten better, have you noticed a difference?
Yes.
Okay, this call.
You had a call.
Hi, you're on the air.
Good morning, Pat, good morning, Chris, and good morning, Nick.
Nick, good morning.
I had a senior moment.
I understand.
Hey, I was wondering, okay, up here on Mill Street, there's one of those clothing boxes, they put a couch up there and the couch isn't even worth, somebody just dumped it, it's, it's not even decent. And it's been about two weeks, it's been raining on it, and it's right on Mill Street where everybody comes into town. What can be done about that?
Do you know where on Mill, is it at, is it at one of, on Mill Street, I'm trying to think where it would be.
Right there, on, right on Nova Star's property, the box is there.
Nova Star property, that would be on up for this way.
Oh, that's up by Rite Aid?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, what we have to do is I'll contact the city manager when I get done here and he'll, he'll have to call Planet Aid, is it a yellow box or blue box?
A yellow one.
Yeah, it's Planet Aid, that's one of the problems we're having is with that group. Goodwill does a good job of policing their stuff, they usually come out immediately and, but I'll, I'll get done that when I leave here.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I understand about the trash and, well, when we were over to the compost center too, I couldn't believe it either, I couldn't believe the stuff, that people can't respect something that they get to use, that people can't respect what they have.
Oh, I know.
And even in this town, I, I know it's adults too, it's not just the kids, they walk, you know, from that deli mart, I think it's over there, they bring these cups and stuff, they get this pop and they just, when they're done with it, just throw it wherever.
Throw it on the ground.
Yeah, it's trash all over the place, I mean, I've seen it, I mean, being out, when I lived out on Center Road, you know, we seen some of it, but uptown, I see a lot of it, and you, you just think people would respect what we have. We have a nice town, it can be a nice town, but we all gotta work together to make it happen.
Very true.
You know, I put up, I go over almost once and twice a day over to Dean Avenue Park, which I've kinda adopted and put it under, took it under my care and I go over there, you know, I've got new trash can, new benches, and, and they just throw it on the ground, it's absolutely unbelievable, you know, two foot from the trash can. Yeah, I don't understand it, but, you know, I understand the big styrofoam, big gulps or whatever you wanna call them, yeah, they're everywhere. I go out there and I police it up and, and what can I say, other than that's what I do, we shouldn't have to do that.
Yeah, that's what I have to do, it, it just blows all over the place, I've caught a couple of kids just dropping their bottles of water even and I says, excuse me, you dropped something, and they're so embarrassed because they didn't see me sitting on my porch, you know, that they pick it up and said, oh, thank you, and they keep walking on it, it's like, you know. And same way with the dog, people walking their dogs, carry a bag with ya.
Yep, understand.
But that's what I wanted to say, ask about that up there, so I appreciate that something could be done about that.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris, bye-bye.
We have a couple of the big trash things, you know, for rental properties that we have, which of course bomb drives by and polices that, but there'll be a couch sitting next to one, then we have to pay to take it to the compost, you know, or to the, you know, Ashtray Bula, to the, whatever it's called, station there, but yeah, that's really, and we don't wanna leave it out in front of our place, you know, so it's.
See, I'd love to catch, I would love to catch somebody.
Especially with phones now, you can take pictures and everything.
Take pictures, but I'd go over and confront them, if I seen somebody doing that, I'd go over and confront them and I'd just call the police right there, it's, it is dumping. They can be cited for dumping, they can't just dump it there.
It has been, it has been brought up about possibly charging.
Yes.
With your trash.
I heard someone talking about it last week and, and I think it's a good idea, you know, we have to look at it, it needs to be, even Chris has brought up about having some type of card, that people from Konya buy a card, they can buy a.
Short term or?
Short term, long term, you know, 10 dumps for, you know, you get a card for 10 dumps or 20 dumps or whatever may be. And of course, people from out of state, I don't really think that we should have people from across the border dumping in Konya. I'm sorry, they don't have a compost site, but, you know, that's, that's kinda.
They shouldn't be, I mean, our taxes are paying for that.
Right, and if you have a punch card, you buy 10 dumps, the 11th dump is free, how about that, people love that.
You know, so that's, that's kinda like, and there's been some, I heard people talking last week on your show, that called in and had some good ideas, but it's not gonna be open every day either, okay, we're not gonna open it every day. Don't know what days, we'll go back and look and see when they were open before, we'll look at like Wednesday, Friday and Saturday, or you know, Thursday, Saturday and Sunday.
I think that's what it used to be.
Something like that.
So you could do the weekend dumping and stuff.
Yeah, and plus, we need to get a grinder in there to.
Right.
Start getting this stuff ground up.
Hi, you're on the air.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Nick, this is Ron, I heard that they were supposed to bring back the recycling bin, what's going on with that?
Okay, as far as I know with the recycling bin, the last thing I heard was going to be in August and it started way back and it was supposed to come back in February, then it was supposed to come back in April and then it was supposed to come back in June or July, you know, I.
Now they're talking October.
Now they're talking October, you know, this is not done by the city, this is being done by the county. And I wish I had a better explanation of what's going on, but I really don't, I'm kinda like out in left field too. I know Debbie Newcomb has gone to, she's more up to date about it than I am, but the last thing I heard was, I think actually Claypool talked about it, I thought, didn't he talk about it last week?
Yeah.
I think they're talking about October now, and I just heard that through Mr. Claypool when he was on AM Live last week.
All right, that's, I just, just we're kinda curious about it, because it's been going around about when it was coming or when it meant it's not and.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, okay.
You know what I know.
Quite frequently.
Yeah, we'll let you know as soon as it's, it's in place. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, let's move on, injection well, you went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yes, June 6th.
I thought, if I listened, if I heard you right at a council meeting, say you were not extremely impressed.
Okay, I understand, I'm the only one that went to this meeting from the city, okay, I was invited.
Oh, Tim was there, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Tim, the city manager was there, our state rep was there, John Patterson and Dan Claypool were there, our county commissioner, and there was about six or seven people from ODNR, this was a meeting that was set up by Mr. Patterson and Dan Claypool to get ODNR to come down to talk to us. I was, I was there, I wasn't impressed, they were, they were trying to, they repeated the same things that, you remember the DVD that we played on channel 6 and 21 and how.
Promo.
Yeah, promo, how safe the injection wells was, were to the community. And I just sat there and I shook my head and, you know, and I was just like in awe, okay, well, they didn't, they didn't tell me anything new.
Claypool said it was a great meeting.
Well, I, I, each to their own, okay, I thought it was, you know, they did talk about and stress, you know, meeting with the communities and talking with the communities. I, you know, I have to say that, that, you know, Dan, Mr. Claypool and John Patterson did push to have some type of meeting with the community, because ODNR really doesn't have to, okay?
No, they're actually setting a precedent if they do.
Yes, and I got that and, but what got me, every question that I asked, and this is oil and gas division, not all of ODNR, every question I asked was wrong, I was wrong, I was like, really? I mean, I, I.
How can a question be wrong?
Well, not true.
So the answer was no.
No, you know, I put down, one of the questions I asked, if injection wells are safe, why doesn't Virginia, why doesn't Virginia PA and New York have them? And they said, well, that's, that's not true, they do have.
Oh, oh, I see.
They do have injection wells, okay? Why do they ship their stuff to Ohio? They ship their stuff to Ohio because the process of getting a permit, okay? Well, how long does it take to get a permit in those states? Three to four years. How long does it take in Ohio? Eh, four to five months, really? And they stated, they also stated that they went way back in 1983 or 84, they went, they went to EPA and said, hey, you ODNR did, and said, hey, we wanna run this program, okay? So one of the questions come up, where does the, I asked, where does the funding go that, or the money that you get? You get five cents a barrel from trucks in state and you get 20 cents for barrels out of state, and he pointed to the guy across, sitting at the table from ODNR, said it goes in his coffers. And I said, how many, how many injection wells are now in the state of Ohio? There are over 200 in the state of Ohio.
Now, this one here is not in operation, right?
Where?
Out, out south.
It's not there yet.
It's not there.
It hasn't been approved yet.
Okay, that's the one on, on the South Ridge property in that area, right? What about the one that's way out south?
Well, I don't, I don't know about that one, I don't know about that one, but I did ask ODNR, how close is the, the permit? Or how close is?
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, how, how close are we to issuing the permit? Close.
That's it.
Close.
What's the big deal here?
And they came back and they said that they asked for some more information on the one for Konya. They went back to the person who submitted the application and they needed some more information. If that information comes back in a timely manner, don't ask me what timely manner means, cause I don't know, but, but I understand, three days later after that meeting on the 9th or the 10th, they got the information they wanted. I said, what if, what if a permit is denied, if a permit is denied, can they resubmit? Absolutely. If all, if there's 10 things on that application, if there's 10 things, I don't know how many things are on the application, but if all 10 things meet their criteria, ODNR, they must issue the permit.
And I don't see it being denied.
But what gets me is, is, you know, they say that it takes three to four years for the EPA to give a permit, but it only takes four months. ODNR says that their standards are the same as EPA's. If it's the same standards, then why has it taken only four months instead of three to four years to do it? But, hey, I was there, I mean, each to his own, I, 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 they just tried to impress me and I didn't, no, I didn't know.
Hi, you're on the air.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I got a question for you, Nick.
Go ahead.
You've got seven councilmen in this small town. Why not downsize the councilmen from seven to three? Use that money to pay somebody to be out there at the compost site? Or cameras, lighting up.
Good morning, Jim Bailey, how are you? Recognize that voice even when it's in town. Well, it's easier said than done, I, I, I believe I talked about this before I went into office, right here on AM Live, that I think that, this is my own opinion, I don't speak for anyone else, I think that it probably ought to go to five council members. I don't know why we have seven. And it's not that easy to do, it has to go on a ballot, it's on, it's in the charter and it has to be put before the people of Konya and voted on. So it's not that easy to do, Jim, is what I'm telling you right now.
I kinda think too, since we're a charter government, I would imagine that would have to be voted on.
Well, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah, I mean, by the entire town.
Yes.
And then even some other criteria, like you're saying, would have to be done too, like you say, it's not as easy as.
Yeah, I mean, can it be done? Yes.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I've looked at, you know, do you do away with the two councilmen at large? They have one, two, three and four and a president of council? Or do you have four councilmen at large?
That's what I think.
And one president of council.
Yeah, I think it should be everybody, each councilman is concerned with the whole community, rather than just.
And that way, if you have four councilmen at large, some will disagree with me and there's some council member sitting out there this morning going, okay, Nick, now, now, but if you have four councilmen at large and a president, the whole city votes on everybody. They vote on everybody, if you have one, two, three and four, only those ward people would be voting, so you gotta look at the pros and cons of doing this. You know, what happens when you got one good or two good super guys who are hard charging and, councilmen at large, and they're getting all the telephone calls and the other guys are getting very little or nothing, or women. So there's, there's pros and cons, but can it be done? Yes.
So somebody has to probably get a petition, get so many signatures, is that, would you get it on the ballot?
You know, I don't know.
I wouldn't know that either.
I don't know, and I mean, I could find out from the law director.
Usually you do have to get names to get anything on a ballot, but I'm not sure.
Then you have to get a certain percentage of the voting.
You know, so how it would be put on the ballot, but could it be done, Jim? Yeah, it could be done, and yeah, you're figuring, what is it, about $6,000? If you took away the two council member at large, that's about $12,000 a year, you know.
$12,000 bucks.
You know, why do, why do we have seven, I can understand when Konya.
Was bigger.
Was bigger and whatever may be, but right now, my home take on it is, I think there ought to be five, and I mentioned this back when I was running for office and.
I think Jim Jones also mentioned it too, when he was the council president, that, you know, maybe three even, you know, Monroe runs on three, of course Monroe's a lot smaller than this area, we have a lot of.
I mean, we got three county commissioners for the whole county.
For the whole county, yeah.
You don't have as much going on now in Konya, there aren't as many companies, I mean, there, it just doesn't seem like there's as much business type things that have to be, you know, overseen by the council.
Yeah, you're right, it doesn't, so.
This some, this to Nick, this is to you, Pat, I would like to thank Mr. Church for the extra trash cans down at the river where we fish, that's Konya Creek. People are using them and making our job easier and more time to fish than, than cleaning up, there were even campers there enjoying the river creek. Thank you once again, Sherry and Roy Allums.
Appreciate it, nice lady.
Yeah, she is a good girl, yeah.
And I have to say, you know, people have been really, really supportive of cleaning up the town. There are some that who disagree with, you know, cutting of the grass and, and six inches and I'll tell you what, and I heard our friend talk about it last Thursday or Friday when Debbie was on, about putting people in jail for, for not cutting their grass and, I don't know if you've noticed, and I'm not saying this because I'm president of the council, but there's, there's been a lot more grass cutting.
Oh, I've seen it, I've seen it.
You know, look at the, the building downtown, down there between Broad and Main, I mean, between Broad and Washington, the individual painted the whole building, front and back, looks nice, have you noticed Spartan flags downtown?
Yes, I have, as a matter of fact.
Spartan colors, flying the Spartan colors, American flag, Spartan colors, all the way down Main Street.
Yes.
I think it looks really good and Konya, I brought that up to Kent Houston and the Board of Education and just trying to build some pride in the community and, and our football team, you know, this is our Konya High School. And I think that's, that's, that's going well, the police have moved or dealt with, let's say dealt with, 178 junk or unregistered cars, 178 vehicles. Absolutely unbelievable, 10 years ago, when I was president of council, we dealt like 96 in a year, we've almost doubled that in four and a half months.
That's simply amazing.
And, and you can see it, you know, people are going, hey, you know, thank you, you know, whatever may be, but I get telephone calls from people and they say, I never use anyone's name, the only name that's ever used when I turn in the complaint is Nick Church. So if somebody wants to get on me, then they can get on me, but I don't like, you know, for neighbors to get into it or whatever, but they'll call me and say, hey, Nick, there's a junk car here, or hey, Nick, like this lady did here with the Planet Aid sofa, you know, I'll deal with it and I'll put it in the complaint with my name on it, but people have really stepped up, I've been really, really.
Good.
Surprised and I've truly enjoyed it and.
I got a couple, something on Facebook that your name was linked to about a dump site on Amboy Road.
I know, it, I started, I think it was Friday or Saturday morning, I started getting all these emails on a petition that's being signed by people from everywhere, I see people from Henderson, Nevada, people from Florida, people from Konya, majority of the people are from Konya, I believe, in the surrounding area, about a, a registered dump site on. about a, a, um, um, registered dump site on Amboy. Okay, well, I don't know what's going on, um, and they want me to step in and, and declare a, a dump site and want me to get EPA involved in whatever may be. Well, what gets me is, no one has called me, I don't know what they're talking about or where this dump site is, the only, the only thing I know about is the dump site that was on Gore.
Right.
Okay, that the EPA, EPA's been to, okay, well, I sent, um, I think it goes all the way back to last Friday when I started getting these emails, and there's about a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty people that have signed this petition that are asking me to step in and, and do something about it, well, I don't know anything about it, no one has called me. Um, and somebody will call me and tell me what's going on, supposedly where it's at. I have asked people at City Hall, um, uh, if, if there's, this is just what I've learned over the past couple of days. Uh, some say it's out by Luke Johns, um, some say you go across Amboy Bridge and you take a right at the first thing and go back in the woods somewhere. Anyways, I'm looking into it.
That would have been an old landfill.
Okay, I, I, I don't know, I'm not familiar with it.
I lived out there, Nick, for years and, and, uh, I don't remember a dump site, I do know about the Gore Road place.
Yeah.
Unless they got that confused, I didn't know, know of no dump site on Amboy Road.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm checking, you know, I am, I'm checking into it, but, uh, it's like.
Newcomb's name was mentioned too, I believe.
Well, the thing about it is, the only ones getting the email, the only ones getting the email, I sent this out to council the other day and I said, hey, is anyone else on council getting these emails on this, uh, dump site, on this petition, wanting us to sign this petition? Um, I've heard back from a couple of them, but Debbie Newcomb said that she got it too. So right now there's only two getting, uh, this petition that's going around, and that's Debbie Newcomb and myself. And there are some comments made, uh, by someone that, uh, some prominent people in town, uh, know about this, um, about this dump site, um, and then, uh, it's confirmed by a, uh, council member, uh, that was on council, and can confirm this, well, if he can confirm it, then why hasn't he come forward and said something, uh, about it? You know?
You mean, somebody that's on council now or before?
Before, and confirmed this, well, if it can be confirmed and why hasn't this person come forward other than signing the petition or whatever may be?
The Gore Road thing goes back to the sixties, I mean, that is nothing new, you know, we've known that that had a situation out there for years.
Well, I understand that is on file with the city, uh, in EPA's, in EPA's findings, okay? Now, this other one, which we're in the process of trying to track down.
Right.
Through rumors and whatever may be, but what gets me is no one has called me, no one has said this is the location of it.
Really?
Or, or whatever, they're, I'm just getting this petition, you know, sign, Nick, uh, request that you do this, this, this and this, well, I'm not, I'm gonna check into it, but I ain't putting my name on anything, you know, you want me to sign something and, and whatever? I mean, I usually take care of problems, so I mean, if, if this is a problem and it exists.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna deal with it, like the compost site or anything. But I, I don't know what they're talking about.
You don't have the facts.
I know, I don't have the facts, I'm on like a wild goose chase right now, trying to figure out what is going on.
Do you know who is soliciting your help?
Who's requesting?
Requesting.
Or who has made the comments? Yes, I know. No, no, I'm not making any comments.
Are you gonna go to them?
No, absolutely not.
It's a mystery dump site, I would say.
It's, it's, it's not supposed to be a mystery.
Down at the bottom of your list of things.
Well, it's supposed to be, anything that deals with public health, I try to.
Right.
When there's rumors going on, I like to try to squash it.
Right, right.
Oh.
Okay.
Good luck with that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I, I just, if somebody says something that I don't think is right, you know, I'm gonna check into it and, and find out what the right answer is. But, I mean, there's a hundred and fifteen people that have signed this petition, um, and several of them from in town, okay? Now, if they've got documentation, or they're saying that they know about this, then they need to call me or they need to call the city manager or, or need to go down, sit down and talk somewhere. Okay, because if they believe that's happening, I wanna know about it too.
I agree.
You know, so does the community, okay? But nothing's been said, other than everybody's signing, it's the same thing.
I'll bet you any money they have this confused with Gore Road.
I, I wouldn't.
Well, I don't know, I'm not saying, I'm not saying yet, okay?
But so certain prominent people know about it, so they're saying that like prominent people have a place to dump their trash, I don't.
I, I, I don't know what to take out of this, but, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, right now the only two, I, like I said, I sent this to all of council and I said, hey, does it, anybody else?
It's just you and me.
And I said, yeah, and I said, uh.
It sounds like.
I sent Phil Garcia.
Fishing scheme, it's a scheme.
A message the other day, I said, hey, Phil, I said, this is in your ward, do you know anything about it?
Nothing.
I'm gonna go for a ride today, I'll find for you if it's over.
But, do I take it serious? Yes, I take it serious, cause you're talking about supposedly active public health.
Morning, you're on the air.
Hi, I wonder if Nick could help, um, we have a lot of noxious smells in the city, noxious odors in our city. I know some of them come from the injection well out south, because, uh, when the wind blows from the south or southwest, I believe it is, we get the odors, um, down near the lake, uh, it goes in Township Park, it goes in the, uh, valley over here by the lake. And, um, uh, the town has a lot of, uh, bad odors. Uh, this particular one is, uh, very toxic. And I'm wondering if there's anything, uh, because I know that the Ohio revised code and also ordinances of the city of Conia address, uh, noxious odors, and, um, wondered if Nick could, uh, address this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Can I address it? Uh, I don't know what you want to hear, um, you have to find out where the noxious odors are coming from. Uh, if we're gonna cite someone, you definitely gotta know where they're coming from, and right now, I don't know where they're coming from. And, uh, I hear from, I've heard it from a couple of people I have breakfast with in the morning, Louis de Plasdo, who has caught the wind of it on, on some occasions, um, but right now it's, it's kinda like hit and miss. Some say it's, uh, factories, some say it's the injection well, um, over in, uh, across the line, um, I don't know what it is.
You know, all three of us, Nick, Chris and myself, all live down by the lake, and I'm speaking for myself, I have never smelled that.
The only funky smell in my house might be my, like, garbage disposal, I put that lemon stuff down.
Well, that's not what she's talking about, she says that, she's said this many times.
Right, I don't know.
Judy Peasepan, by the way, um, that she has this, she notices it down there and she lives down by Township Park.
Well, Judy, I mean, not Judy, but, uh, um, like I said, my friend Louis de Plasdo, who complains about it, and first he thought it was the hospital. The incinerator, well, I understand the incinerator's not there anymore, some said they, they thought it was coming from a factory. Um, whether it be, you know, the one over on Gore or the one across the Kingsville line, um, I don't know, uh, I don't know what the answer is. Um, I understand maybe that you can get these, I don't know what to call them, catch boxes from EPA, that you can set this box out and catch the air in it and send it in and get it analyzed.
Very interesting.
I heard of that just here recently, um, other than that Judy, I don't have, um, any idea on how to tackle, um, that problem, uh. I've, I've only had, had probably one or two, um, what I wanna say, complaints, if you wanna call, complain Judy and, and of course Louis de Plasdo getting on me all the time about the smell, but, um, I understand, but I, I don't have an answer, Judy.
Alright, hi, you're on the air.
You're on the air.
Hi, I've got a question for Nick.
Yes, you gotta shut your radio, te- television down.
Um, okay, uh.
Shut your TV down.
Okay, uh, these ATVs that come up, uh, the Bessemer property to Middle Road, and then they're south on Middle Road, oh, probably about forty, forty-five miles an hour. What's the regulation on, on this?
There are, according to the ordinance that, uh, the city has, there are, uh, specific streets that they can use to get to where they're going, uh, what those specific streets are, um, I don't know, but I can find out and I can pass it along to Pat and Pat can, uh, put it out on the air.
Okay, because, uh, this is a real problem, uh, and it, it's, appears to be young kids on these, uh, ATVs. But it's usually on the weekends that they're, you know, up and down Middle Road, and I can think that they were allowed to, eh, eh, be on, uh, Bessemer property.
Well, they're, I could be willing to say that they're not allowed on Bessemer property, but the police, the Conia police are not gonna chase them, um, they're on, uh, the railroad, uh, police are gonna have to, uh, deal with them.
Okay, well, what about the Conia police getting them on, uh, our thoroughfares?
If they can get them on, if they can capture them and stop them on their, on the thoroughfares, they'll stop them, which they have in the past. But of course, you know, they have to catch them.
And you, and you, if you see it, you gotta call.
You gotta call.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks a lot, Nick.
Sure, have a good day.
Bye bye. Alright, last question, Nick, uh, I understand you, uh, gave a little donation or whatever, might have been a big donation, to Matt Crawford for his nature trail.
Well, it was, you know, Matt Crawford, you know, he, he has done, um, a heck of a job. Yeah, and I gave him a, a, a little, I couldn't make it there Saturday, I wanted to go out and help, but I was at the, uh, where was I, the Tree Commission Saturday, uh, out of Mountain Park, Arbor Day. And, um, but I gave him a little donation for help and, and he deeply appreciated it, Matt got his wish. Uh, twenty people showed up.
That's what he wanted.
See, that's what he wanted, and let me tell you, he said those twenty people busted their butts. He goes, and it was nonstop.
He's coming on tomorrow to talk about that.
Phil Garcia brought out, uh, twenty-four, um, lunches.
Yeah.
For the people, but, uh, Matt and those twenty people, um, they did, they did a hell of a job and thank you and, and, uh, from the community, and you know, Matt's, uh, gone through some tough times here, but, uh, he, he just keeps pounding away.
Yeah, he's, he's put on some weight, he's put on fifteen pounds and he's looking much better and, uh, sounds much better, getting stronger by the day. And he couldn't be happier, uh, with turnout, uh, so good, good for all the people out there.
But I'd just like to let people know, I will be gone, I won't be back to the seventh of July. Uh, so if you have a concern, you can call Debbie Newcomb or anyone in the council, my person would be glad to take care of you, cause I'm turning my phone off.
Sure you are.
I'm turning my phone off.
Do you have a long meeting tonight?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't predict a long meeting.
No, no, okay, cool.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it, but, uh, um, we just keep plugging away, I just, you know, wish we could get out of this, this thing of, uh, reacting to everything and start being proactive, and start getting some things done. Uh, but we're, it just seemed like we're always, we take one step forward, we take two or three steps back. You know, but for all the people out there who are cutting their grass and attempting to make Conia better and helping out and, and, uh, just, thank you, I appreciate it.
One last call, hi, you're on the air.
Hello, Pat, hello, Nick.
Hey.
I just wanna say to you, Nick, she can get one of those lists from the police department for the roads they're allowed to be on.
Yes, okay.
The lady can go right to the police department and get that list.
Okay.
And I have the same problem down here and I'm on the road that they're allowed to be on, but they come down there with them loud exhaust and they go like crazy, and they don't have no license plate on their, on their thing, which they're supposed to have a plate now.
Right.
And I remember Arcaro was, wanted to take, Chief Arcaro at the time, wanted to have like a little thing that they could turn around and go to the police department so they would be allowed to be on the streets. And I, I don't think that went anywhere with council, because he wanted to have like an inspection thing and it would cost you a little fee.
Yes.
And that fee would allow you to be on Conia's streets, on the designated streets.
Okay.
Okay, and that, I don't know if you wanna rejuvenate that or whatever, but that, I thought that was something that would be beneficial, because some of these kids have these loud exhausts and it's just really ridiculous.
Understand, that's a good idea.
And the other thing I wanna say, you're doing a good job. I like what you're doing, I see a lot of lawns that weren't mowed before and were abused and now they're getting taken care of. And I'm right behind you, bud, I back you up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Good job, Nick.
Yep.
Have a nice day, bud.
Bye bye. This, uh, from Judy added this, uh, we took a drive out south and, uh, the smell is coming from the Hildon Road injection well, absolutely, so, that's where she said it's coming from. Nick, thank you so much, I held you overtime today, but.
That's alright, you do it all the time.
I do it to you all the time, you know.